Good evening. It's Tuesday, July 15th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. This is the City of Franklin Common Council. Madam Director of -- actually, Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Here.
Alderwoman Eichmann.
Here.
Alderman Hassan.
Here.
Alderwoman Day.
Here.
Alderman Salus.
Here.
Alderman Craig.
Present. Excellent. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up is Citizen Common Period. I will read, as I do, the City of Franklin Meeting Rules of Decorum for Attendees and Participants. For those attending City of Franklin meetings, number one, respectful and orderly conduct is expected at all times. Number two, disruptive or unruly behavior, including but not limited to clapping, verbal disruptions, signs, and outbursts will not be tolerated. Those wishing to speak during City of Franklin meetings, number one, approach the microphone when the chair opens the floor for citizen comments. Two, state your name and address for the record. Three, address your comments to the Common Council Board Commission Committee only. Number four, limit your comments to three minutes or less. I am the timekeeper. Five, no endorsements or electioneering are allowed. Six, speakers shall refrain from presenting unduly repetitious, offensive, threatening, slanderous, defamatory, or obscene remarks. Number seven, persons wishing to speak as a spokesperson on behalf of a neighborhood, subdivision, homeowner's condominium, or business association, or similar group with common interests, shall demonstrate their qualifications to do so accordingly to the City of Franklin Resolution Number 2007-6227 before speaking on that body's behalf. Number eight, questions may be answered immediately by the chair or referred to city staff for a future reply in a timely manner. Those not adhering to these rules of decorum, for attendees and participants, will be asked to leave or be removed from the meeting if necessary. So I'm the timekeeper. If anybody would like to speak, whoever speaks first, please tap the mic to make sure we are good. We are good. Thank you, ma'am.
Nance Gassavick, 7518 Carter Circle North. Over the past six months, I've become increasingly concerned about the traffic congestion at the intersection of Rossin and 76th. My mother lives at New Perspectives, and I live at Whitestone Village. When I walk home from her house, the amount of traffic and the speed of traffic is sometimes frightening. I think a lot of people are trying to eat the lights. Starting mid-afternoon, the traffic going west on Rossin is backed up so far that it takes three to four light changes to be able to turn onto 76th. Today, driving south on 76th, traffic was backed up from Rossin to pass the entrance to The Rock. I can only imagine what the congestion will be like with over 300-plus new apartments on the southeast section of Rossin and 76th. With the new stoplights that are being proposed, I'm concerned that even getting out of our complex to turn onto 76th Street will be difficult. I'm assuming a traffic study has been completed, and I would like to see it or find out where it's available online. Finally, the repeated closed-door council sessions regarding Poth General make it seem as if a development of this magnitude affecting so many Franklin residents and taxpayers needs to be held in secret. The optics on this are very poor.
Thank you, ma'am, and I'll respond back to some points after Citizen Commons is done, which will be to that point, and I'm sure at least one more. Hello, Ms. Mathwick.
Hello. Linda Mathwick, 7321 Brun Drive. Good evening, and I would like to once again say hello to those watching online. I want to start by saying I'm typically a very positive person. When I speak at these meetings, it's not out of negative or personal grievances. I do so on behalf of concerned citizens, people in our community who are frustrated and, in some cases, angry about what's happening in the neighborhoods. My goal is to make sure their voices are heard. I want to remind the council that it is your responsibility to be open with the public, and you are accountable for all decisions made on behalf of Franklin residents. I also want to clarify my comments from the July 1st Common Council meeting regarding the Orchard View development. I mentioned that adding extensive landscape risks worsening flooding and doing more harm than good. My concern is not about the development itself, but with the impact of nearby neighbors, particularly those on Brun Drive, where water issues are already significant. It is an environmentally sensitive land, including wetlands and natural springs. Mr. Martin from Land by Label had committed to speaking with these residents to understand the challenges that they're facing, but so far, he has not followed through. Now, regarding item G8 on tonight's agenda, which may go into closed session. If this item has the potential to result in eventual tax increases, at any point during the duration of the agreement, it should be discussed openly. Citizens deserve to know how taxpayers' revenue is being considered or spent. Being open with your constituents is not optional. It's a core principle of responsible governance. I understand the developer is seeking financial support from the city. Recently, it was explained to me that past practices have been to avoid supporting residential development unless there's strong public benefit. In my opinion, it does not benefit residents sufficiently. When residential projects are included in a TIF, the city, schools, MATC, and MMSD don't receive the increased revenue that is needed to cover the additional costs that developments create, that the developments in a TIF would create. So who makes up the difference? It's the City of Franklin taxpayers.
Danagan 9011 West Hawthorne Lane. I'm submitting this public comment to address the City of Franklin's ongoing failure to follow its own resolution adopted March 5th, 2024, specifically regarding outdoor noise regulations and the protection of residential quality of life. The 2024 resolution affirms the city's obligation to uphold the right to quiet enjoyment of residential properties free from nuisance as a common line right to all individuals. It reiterates that local regulations exist to prevent incompatible land uses that are harmful to the peace and welfare of residents. Importantly, it highlights the new municipal code 18340 expressly prohibiting noise disturbances that cross residential property boundaries, particularly those involving amplifiers and loudspeakers. The resolution also addresses, also established clear procedures that any outdoor operation, event, or use that may generate off-site noise must undergo a formal application process, including sound control plans to minimize noise, and the plans shall include methods to substantially contain the noise within the premises. The city clerk is required to submit such applications to the Common Council for review and approval. This process was put in place to ensure transparency and consistency. Furthermore, the 2024 resolution required any events that continue over weeks or months require a periodic review, which is part of item G3, I believe, on tonight's agenda. Please advise when the Umbrella Bar periodic review is scheduled for the Common Council review. In addition, the concert series and the outdoor DJ events that are now operating at the Umbrella Bar on Fridays and Sundays have not followed these mandated procedures. These amplified events are clearly audible, word for word, from over 3/4 of a mile away, routinely disturbing the peace of residential homes. There is no record that these events were ever formally reviewed or approved by the Common Council as required by Resolution 2024-8109 and Code 121. Furthermore, for any event with a history of complaints or elevated noise levels, the resolution requires that application materials, plans, and staff reports and complaints be included in the public packet. This requirement has also not been followed, despite repeated reminders to city staff by myself and during public comment raising this exact issue. To date, over 100 such events in 2024 and 2025 have proceeded without this public documentation, violating both the spirit and letter of the resolution. I respectfully request that the city identify the specific approvals, if any, granted for these DJ events that are occurring twice a week, every week, and explain why the adopted resolution and related procedures have not been followed. The city has a responsibility to enforce its own rules and protect the health and welfare of its residents. Lastly, regarding item G3, which is the Milwaukee Milkman Games. As a representative of the Hawthorne neighborhood, I want to express that I do believe that the noise has not been an issue for the Milkman Games this year. I do believe that the decibel levels are not operating at the 60 to 65 decibel at the property line and therefore have not been an issue. If you do raise the decibel levels to 60 or anything above 55, it will be proven to be a nuisance to the surrounding neighborhoods. And my final comment is during the last Common Council meeting, I asked for clarification on what the asterisk meant on the open records report, and I know the open records discussion was over an hour, so obviously you didn't get to that topic. But I would really appreciate an explanation since half that report was covered with asterisks, but it had no explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kin. Anyone else wishing to speak? Dr. Khan, good evening and welcome.
So, good evening, City Council members and the Mayor Nelson. On behalf of the Franklin Muslim community, I'd like to extend my heartfelt thanks and appreciation to the City of Franklin.
Dr. Khan, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Mahsud Khan, 9815 West Woodfield Road, Franklin, Wisconsin.
Thank you, sir.
So, as I was mentioning, on behalf of the Franklin Muslim community, I'd like to extend my heartfelt thanks and appreciation to the City of Franklin for officially proclaiming Muslim Heritage Month. This recognition not only honors the rich cultural contributions of Muslim Americans, but also promotes inclusion, understanding, and unity within our diverse city. Your support sends a powerful message that every community matters and is valued. Thank you, once again, for your leadership and for standing with us in celebrating our shared values of respect and community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Khan. Normally, we're going to get rid of round two, but if you promise to be brief, then if not, I'm going to cut it off, so.
It is brief.
Ms. Mathwick, state your name and address again for the record, and we're going to shut it down.
Linda Mathwick, 7321 Brun Drive. Interestingly, my phone has been ringing consistently from neighbors who received a letter titled "Notice of Data Security Incident." Naturally, they're confused and concerned. As of today, I personally have not received this letter. I have been told that this will be addressed at the August 5th Council meeting, but in the meantime, I have a list of questions that I hope can be answered during next month's meeting. I'm going to read these questions so they're on public record, and both those in attendance tonight and watching online understand the nature of the concerns being raised. Number one, if the incident occurred in August of 2024, why has it taken nearly 11 months to notify the residents of Franklin? This alone is very concerning. Number two, was this letter initiated by the City of Franklin? And if so, why was it not printed on Franklin letterhead? Number three, did the city direct this company that sent the letter to assist with the data security incident? Number four, why was there no communication directly from the mayor's office so that residents knew what to expect? A data breach should promptly be handled. Number five, how did this company obtain residents' contact information? This situation and letter raises serious concerns about legitis -- legitis -- legitis -- I can't say it. Being legitimate. Sorry about that. It appears to many of us that this could be fraudulent. My fear is that citizens of Franklin may call the phone number or access the website and potentially be taken advantage of, compromising their personal and financial information and falling victim to a scam. Mayor Nelson, may I have permission to give this list to Director Hurst so you have the questions available to review?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
You won't be so lucky. I'm still here.
No problem.
Eli Gassavick, 7518 Carter Circle North. Just a few quick questions, all concerning Poth General. During the last meeting, I spoke to Ian, and he said that on their website, they would have the layout of their new proposal. Unfortunately, it's been almost three weeks, and it's still not there. Because one of the concerns regarding that layout is that a couple of the buildings, they claim are three stories plus one. Now, when I went to school, that means four, but they were insisting it was three plus one. I'm not certain, but I don't think there's any apartment buildings in Franklin that are higher than three stories.
You are correct.
Then there would be no reason to approve a higher one there, especially in a residential area. That simply wouldn't make any sense. To take it a little step further regarding the traffic, what my wife was talking about, right now, we've got four lights between Braun and Ballpark Way. When you're heading north, I'm sorry, on 76th Street, that's less than a mile. You're going to have another light at Harry's, so you're going to have five lights. And who knows, maybe even the sixth one. But it's going to take 20 minutes to go less than a mile? Because you're being stopped at every single light. I don't know how you can control that traffic. Hopefully, your people can, but I have no clue. And last thing, I implore the board to simply use common sense when you're thinking about Poth General and what they're proposing and asking for. I'm just using a small, little example, but last year, at Root River, they had a weekend of music blaring, and I know there were over 200 phone calls to the police department concerning the music.
Root Fest, it was called.
Root Fest, okay, thank you. And it was so obvious to me, they had the stage facing the residential area. If you would have just turned the stage around and have it face a forest preserve, end of story. I mean, again, that's just a common sense thing. Hopefully, you can use some of that common sense for approving Poth General if you feel it's necessary, but in a way that doesn't really affect the residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Going once. We'll close it, and I will respond back to a few things, and we have this. So I'll start kind of in the reverse order. So the data breach document that was sent out, we are going to have an August 5th agenda item on that, which will give a little more of a backstory. But that FAQ sheet that was sent out, that was posted, it's on our website. I posted it. The Alders were tagged on it. To post it, it has a lot of explanation on how it happened. This happens to municipalities, unfortunately, all the time. And when it happens, we report it to the police. Police start investigations, find out it's in Canada, it's overseas, it's whatever. So we do our due diligence. When you get hacked, we don't have control of that. But there will be, there's plenty of explanations on how this went, and the timing, and how long it was under investigation. And when we have these, and these come up, they do, then it's, I think, how am I going to say? I think I know that if, when we had a few more of these attempted breaches, and if we start putting out these notices for attempted breaches, we're, when we're not, we want to make sure we're giving clear and concise information not to cause a lot of fear, uncertainty. Should it have been signed? 100% that letter should have been signed. Absolutely. And if in doubt, put my name on it. I'm fine with that. I'll take responsibility for it. But we will have more on that, and please check out our website, because not only is there the letter of explanation, we've gotten some questions, so we put those on the website as well. Transitioning over to the Poth portion, the three plus one, the one is underneath underground parking, from what I understand, and that's only in the center area. And the outer areas are normally two-story, and that's it. Everything we're doing with Poth, we don't have a tentative agreement. We are still negotiating with the developer. And like on the Fourth of July, I had an opportunity to speak with some state reps, and even our state reps were, one of them got called about the process and why it goes to closed session. And it goes to closed session while we're negotiating with what's in the best interest of the city, what we want from the developer, what our financial people are saying about this, whether it's SB Friedman or Lers, whoever we're using. I mean, these are things that we're using to come up with logical explanations and what we're using to determine and define what's best for the City of Franklin, especially long-term. I really hope nobody thinks that that should be discussed in open session, because then all they're going to do is sit at home who we're negotiating with and take note of, oh, I guess Franklin thinks this is important, I guess. So we wouldn't do that. However, we will, once we have something, something tangible that we believe we have as a good project to move forward with, like we said for months and months before Alderman Salus was in office, was, yeah, there's going to be another neighborhood meeting updating. Here's a final approved plan that we want to go with, and that's going to be, that's, because this developer, it's been a very fluid change to the final plans, the financial component, the retail commercial component, the residential component. And to the woman speaker about flooding issues and issues like that, I think those need to be brought up here and now to our planning and engineering. If there is a problem, we want to take care of that now before any development happens, because it's the right thing to do. So we are still moving fluidly through this, but tonight's closed session is, again, more negotiating. We're not there yet. We do not have a tentative agreement. I believe we're close, but we do not have a tentative agreement. These are things that we're digging into the weeds on, and it has to be discussed by this council with our financial professionals as far as where we go, how we get there, and why. So I hopefully that covered things. So I'll close and move on to item number C2, a proclamation in recognition of Muslim American Heritage Month. This is a wonderful plaque. I'm going to be coming over here, and if there's members of the community that would like to be up here, and then pictures and all sorts of great things, this is a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I have our high-end cover that you get to keep with this. So I can, I'll be reading it right over here. Everybody from the community wants to come up here, and I'll read it, and I'll steal this. Good evening and welcome. So, so who's going to be? I'm going to read this first, and then I'll give it to you. This is really nice. A proclamation in recognition of Muslim American Heritage Month. Whereas Muslims make up nearly 25% of the global population, and Islam is the world's fastest-growing religion. And whereas Muslims around the world, and in the United States specifically, constitute a racially and culturally diverse group that is bound together by a shared belief, love and strength, and unity as power. And whereas the Wisconsin Muslim Civic Foundation empowers and amplifies the voices of the Wisconsin Muslim community, civic engagement, research, advocacy, thriving, foster a more inclusive and equitable society for all Wisconsinites. And whereas while Muslims make substantial contributions to virtually every aspect of society, including business, academia, law, healthcare, the military, and more, we acknowledge that the history and contributions of Muslim Americans in our community are often neglected or defaced by prejudice, discrimination. Xenophobia. Xenophobia. Yeah.
That's a new one.
That's a new one. Also, did you throw that in there?
Parochial.
Whereas on this occasion,
It's racial.
we recommit ourselves to standing against hate and injustice in all forms and to combating anti-Muslim rhetoric through awareness, education, community, and meaningful action. And whereas Wisconsin is home to the vibrant Muslim community that plays an essential role in forming and fundamentally enriching the unique character of our city, state, and nation. And whereas the governor having proclaimed July 2025 to be Muslim American Heritage Month throughout the state of Wisconsin, the state of Wisconsin joining Wisconsinites of all faiths and backgrounds in celebrating our Muslim friends and neighbors and the cultural and religious heritage of the Muslim community. Now, therefore, I, John R. Nelson, may the City of Franklin hereby recognize July 2025 as Muslim American Heritage Month throughout the City of Franklin, and I commend this observance to all our residents presented this Common Council July 15th, 2025. Anybody wish to say something, but here's the, sorry. I have to take one picture here? No, 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 not the whole thing, just the picture. Presenting a picture, because I was taking a video. Oh. We have, let's see here, no hearings, Ernie David, E. Edward, organizational mayor commission appointments. These are all roll call votes. Approval of the regular meeting minutes from the council, July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Going over to E. Edward now, organizational mayor commission appointments. Take these individually with a roll call vote, please. Justin Lockridge, 7108 West Rossin Avenue, Alderman D. 2, Economic Development Commission, one-year term expiring June 30th of 2026. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichmann.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alderwoman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Salus.
Aye.
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. E. 2, Fozia Querci, 8550 West Hawthorne Lane, Alderman D. 6, Finance Committee, one-year unexpired term expiring April 30th, 2026. Is there a motion, Mr. Craig? I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
Alderman Salus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichmann.
Aye.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. Welcome to Finance. It's going to be riveting next Tuesday. Under F. and Frank letters, we have none going into G1. Franklin Senior Citizens Travel Program. Let's see here, Semiannual Update for 2025. Madam Director of Administration, do you have anything on this?
I do not. I guess what I can state is that the budget had been amended as was decided at our previous June 19th, I believe it was. No, I'm sorry, but at one of our previous meetings in May that we would allocate $10,000 additional to the senior travel program, and we were provided with a financial report that was a directive from June 19th of 2007 for the program.
Okay, so at this point, there's no representative here from the senior travel program? So is it simply to be received and placed on file?
Motion to receive and place in file.
Second.
First and a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G2, Franklin Senior Citizens, Inc., Program Semiannual Report for 2025. Madam Director of Administration.
So, yeah, it's relatively very similar, except that the new president of the senior citizens group had not been informed of the recent citizens group had not been informed of the responsibilities of reporting to the council, obviously has since been informed, and has provided the information that was requested. I also provided to the new president information that he could share with all of those that had been elected as part of the program, just some basic information of expectations and dates from the city.
Thank you. Further discussion on this?
I'd like to make the motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
First and second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. G3, previously approved request to allow for a maximum sound level of 65 dBa for the Franklin Field 2025 temporary use permit for the property located at 7035 South Ballpark Drive, Rock Ventures LLC. Mr. Regula Martinez, good evening, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, thank you. This is about the Franklin Field Stadium, the temporary use that the council approved the request to have a maximum sound level of 65 decibels, and at the same motion, the council recommended to bring the item back to this meeting. I look at the complaints from city files, there was one complaint that was submitted on June 6, and that complaint was related to the fireworks event that date, and the applicant received a license for that fireworks event. It was over the 65 decibels, but it was related to fireworks that is expected to be over the 65 sound level. That was the only complaint received for the Franklin Field.
Okay, further discussion? Alderman Day?
I, I do not. This was just a placeholder to come back, just as a fail-safe, because there are so many baseball games, so there have been no complaints, so I see no reason to make any adjustments.
Is there a motion to receive and place on file, then?
I'll make the motion to receive and place on file. I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Ikman, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Officer, thank you. We're good. G4, tentative agreement between the city of Franklin and the Franklin Professional Police Association for a 2025 to 28 successor collective bargaining agreement. Chief, good evening and welcome, and I know this was last night at Personnel. So who would like to take the?
I can take the, the lead on this, and then ask my colleagues to jump in as, as they find fit. So we had started our negotiations with the police department union over a year ago now, and we were able to, after hours and various meetings, able to come to an agreement on June 12. It was ratified by their union on June 23. It was wohly approved by the Personnel Committee last night, and they recommend for approval tonight with the common council. So essentially, what we had determined through back and forth numbers and exchanging of information is that we want, well, this was a, a goal, is that we want to be able to be in the, the top third, or the top half, in terms of pay for our police department, pay and benefits, and we're not there. We're at 10. And so the final agreement, we have provided a 4% increase effective 7-1 with back pay of capped at a $500 back pay for each employee that is still with the city, so anybody that retired wouldn't get their back pay, and what have you. So that's capped. There's substantial savings there for the city. And then we were also able to get a fourth year. So for 2028, that year is also been locked up under this negotiated contract. It would be 4% for each year, and ultimately, that will put them at the top half, eventually, when, when all of this plays out. So we're trying to be competitive where we can. We feel like we have made a, a number of concessions, obviously, as they have, and we believe that it's important that we provide a benefit package and pay that will be attractive to bring on lateral transfers, and also to keep our, our police department intact, and, and provide for longevity bonus that's a little bit more than it was, and we're testing that piece out. Another change that had occurred is much like the, the fire contract, where they had gone from 20 years to 15 years of retiree health insurance available to them. The police department obviously had asked for that as well, and there's minimal impact from that. However, there is substantial impact in terms of bringing over lateral transfers. And then, again, the longevity pay, this is a, and a agreed-upon temporary system that we're going to try out, see how it works, if it provides benefit to our police department or not. We'll find out at the end of 2028, and going into 2029. I, there's, there's some minor ones, too, offering sick time that would normally not be available until after probationary period. We have that included in the agreement. The paid time away for union president, which is not, it doesn't match, but it is a benefit that had been provided to the fire department. The change in hours was something that was done a while back, and we're just recognizing it formally, clear by one hour. And then shift selection, allowing our officers to pick the shifts versus just seniority, and then when a position opens up, you can move to a shift. So we're recognizing that they, they would like flexibility in that. We've got training language that was adjusted to remove overtime pay for training, and have it be straight time. And residency, we provided a, a larger scope of territory for our police department, and it was definitely a compromise. They wanted all of the commu, the counties that are listed here, Milwaukee, Waukesha, Racine, Kenosha, Washington, Ozaki. However, we had determined that Ozaki is substantially elongated, and with one freeway system coming into this area, the, the timeframe and the expectance of our police chief, and bringing anybody in in case of emergency, in particular, special teams, that wouldn't be desirable by the city. So what we had done is we capped it, I believe it was Highway 60 for, 60 for that one, and then in Kenosha, actually, it's probably 50 and 60. Regardless, we capped it. We included most of the counties, but determined that it made sense to keep them roughly within 30 minutes or so drive from the city.
Well done. So before we go to Alderman Day, and just to add a few things, as I said on these as well, this was a very fair contract. There are a number of openings that still exist on the PD, and we aren't immune to anything. And I know last Monday, when I checked the hiring site, which is called WileyNet, had 139 postings for police officers from part-time boat up to chief, and 10 years ago, there was half that. 15 years ago, there was a fourth of that, as the chief is acknowledging. So the demand is there. It's, you know, it's, we have to be competitive. That fourth year of this contract is awesome. That's a great financial planning tool for the city. When it comes to budgeting, every contract I've ever been in, in over 30 years, was always a three-year. So this fourth year is a great thing, but I see other municipalities, just because of planning for their budgets, trying to get that fourth year. So that's, that's great. I think everything else was fair. Alderman Day?
Thank you. I just have a few clarifying questions about this. I, I don't have any problem with, with voting this through. I just, this is from my own personal knowledge. So for the paragraph that talks about where we, where we rank as far as pay, it says that we were 10th out of 14 communities we compare ourselves to. When you say when we compare ourselves to, is that communities in the county? Is that communities of like size? What is, what does that mean?
That is based off of a comparison of communities that was provided to us by Gov. HR in 2014 or 15. They identified by community demographics that there were X amount of, of communities that we aligned with, and that we would consider comps.
Okay.
So we, we compare ourselves to them every year.
Okay, I'm familiar with Gov. HR. So that's okay. Then, so, this is for chief, then. So in, in that same paragraph, it says that, you know, the, these raises will help, but it doesn't help trying to convince an applicant to work for Franklin versus one of our neighboring communities. And I'm just curious, with some of the, the transfers that have happened recently, have you had any conversations with them about kind of the, the main reasons why they decided to go elsewhere? Was it primarily pay and benefits? Was it, was it something else? I'm trying to figure out, you know, what, outside of, you know, monetary, if there's something that we can be adding to sweeten the pot to get retention, or to recruit, obviously, as the mayor just alluded to. There's a lot of, a, a lot of openings for probably not as many candidates. So how can we, you know, kind of sweeten the pot that isn't necessarily financial, because as it's alluded to in here, that we're going to be a little bit strapped with this increase. So is there anything else that's been going on that we can look for in the future to try to, to help you retain or attract officers?
Is on, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
A little closer, okay.
That's not the one I broke, is it?
We'll find out. A lot of the, the trans, people that transferred out recently was more for personal reasons. It wasn't like a, a monetary reason. Family, pretty much just family reasons. I think this contract is very fair financially. If the city can't do any better, I think this is, this is adequate. I think the Franklin community brings a lot in and of itself in the support. So you can't really quantify that, but it's a great community to work for. I think I'm always looking for things within an department that maybe don't cost a lot, things like wellness, whether it's, next week, we're going to be getting a therapy dog, which is a lot for wellness. We're trying to make the department itself as attractive as possible. But I do think this is, although it doesn't place us at the top, I don't, I do think it makes us competitive enough, that the other tangibles that the city brings will be enough to remain competitive. It's hard to find people, but I think our city and department have a good reputation, so it takes more effort, but we're still able to do that.
Okay, thank you for that. I mean, and police, fire, DPWR, the things that keep the cities together. So whatever we can do to keep those three groups intact is, is what we need to do as, as a council. But if there are things that, that you see or notice that you feel will help, please bring those forward to us, or, or the Director of Administration, or Director of Finance, so we can, you know, kind of keep on top of it in these four years, so that we don't, you know, go off a cliff, and then, you know, in 2028, have to try to find some giant mountain to overcome.
I thi, I think if we focus on wellness, we continue to do that, whether it's something I'd be interested in, I think brings a lot to the table, is a, like a neck-up checkup once a year. There are costs behind that, but I think that's something a lot of departments aren't going to. Obviously, we can discuss that later, but if you're looking for specifics, that's one thing that comes to mind right away, taking care of our officers and staff, both mentally and physically.
And if I may interject, I think that we did a great job of ironing out those during the nearly year that it took us, and that is exactly why we felt it was acceptable to match the fire department's benefits for their retiree health insurance, and tried to do what we could where we could with minimal impact, or even just the changing of hours, the option for them to choose their shifts, if that's available to them.
So before we go to Alderman Pecorelli and Alderman Craig, there was one thing in that contract that hadn't been changed since 1986. You caught that with the cough. 1986. That's crazy. So Alderman Pecorelli and Alderman Craig.
Thank you. So going back to the, the 14 communities, and right now, I think we're 10th. At, in it, in here, it has by the end of 2020, 2028, so the end of the contract, we're expecting we'd be sixth out of 14. And, and it has comments in here that that's assuming a 3.5% increase for communities that have not yet settled agreements out to 2028. How many of the 14 have kind of opened? And, and the reason I ask that is just to get an understanding of, there are only a few, so we would still gain, or is a lot of them, and could we be in a situation that they all come up with 4% or something like that, and we end up back where we are right now?
Short answer is, we don't know.
Okay.
Short answer is, it could happen. You could have a situation where they have a three-year contract, but then after one year in, both sides agree to open it up again.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's to, you know, there's really no direct answer, and I would be very cautious to give you an answer, because it's too fluid.
Okay.
But we're just looking at the numbers we have presented to us right now.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Alderman Craig?
Yes, I have a couple items. So when it talks about the modified MOUs with the SROs and crime prevention officers, has that been something that we've discussed with our partners with these MOUs, that there will be a cost increase? And are they on board with this, or would that be something where, you know, for instance, the SROs, would they remain the same through the school district, and the difference is made up by the city?
I think most of the changes in the MOUs that are in here are referring more to that shift selection.
Okay.
Because when an officer was assigned as an SRO, while they were in that assignment, let's say they entered an assignment on third shift, but then a position opened up on, on first shift or day shift during their assignment, they could write for that, essentially kind of reserve that spot. So whoever took that spot would then have a temporary spot. It, it got to be very confusing. So by allowing them to pick their shifts every single year, they agreed to take that out of those other agreements, so we didn't have a list of who has what, and it had to be administratively challenging, versus now, they've agreed to, to let that drop, and every year, officers can write for their shift, and it's assigned based on seniority. I don't expect a lot of transition, but it does offer freedom to someone who maybe, maybe went to third shift, and then had children, and their, and their family situation changed, and now they want to go to another shift. It offered them a lot more freedom. Otherwise, someone would have to retire, or leave, or some significant change for people to jump to different shifts. So it's, other departments do it, it's a little bit more about flexibility, but then we wanted to alleviate that language in those MOUs that kind of then held that other system in place.
Okay.
So it's more of a language cleanup, really.
Yeah, correct. We removed that part, except as, and then it just basically spoke to shift assignments.
One of the things that the mayor alluded to is the mental health piece of this. Is there anything where, because I, is that just going to be part of the health insurance, or would there be anything to explicitly cover, or kind of promote that within, within the workforce?
Well, like I said, wellness is something that's very important. I think that differentiates one department from another, how they care for their employees. So that's very forefront on my mind. I always have an open-door policy towards anyone with new ideas. Like I said, the, the neck-up checkup, the, the mental health wellness check-in once a year is essentially what that, departments have that. We have written for a grant to try to put that in place. So I think that's very important. But there's, we do have some kind of, I'll call them fail-safes in place, that if someone has a mental health concern, we do have a facility they can go to. It's like a pre-arranged thing several years back here, that they can get the help they need, kind of a no questions asked.
Great, yeah.
So there are mechanisms in place.
Very con, I, I echo a lot of the concerns in, with yourself of making sure that our force is not just physically well, but also mentally well. So I think that's really super important, and as long as we're able to take care of them, not only financially, them, not only financially, but that piece that's not very much talked about, I think is important.
It's an ongoing process that could always use improvement.
And then my last question is more for the Director of Administration. When, and when would the fire union contract be up for renegotiation as well? Because I would assume that seeing what the police is getting, fire is going to want another kind of whack at the piñata as well.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that we are, that will be closing shortly along with the PD? Or would this be something that we have several years before that comes up?
Yeah, so I believe each contract is three years, and then obviously, we got an additional year. We settled the fire department contract, I want to say, last year. Feels like one long day, so regarding time, it's very difficult, but we settled that last year for this year and the following year and the year after that. However, I think comparing the two departments is inadequate to do, because our fire department is ranked first out of the 14 communities. So obviously, I feel that we are providing them with the best that we can provide them with, and it's time to give a lift to the police department.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion here, if there's somebody would like to make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second roll call, please.
Alderman Pecorelli?
Aye.
Alderman Ickman? Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes, motion carries. It'll be a lot of happy Franklin officers now. Thank you, chief, for all your help in this as well.
Yes, thank you.
G5 listed donations for January through June of 2025. Madam Director of Finance, what do you got on this?
I'm just asking to recognize all of the local businesses and residents for their donations that they've made throughout the first half of the year.
There are some very heavy hitters in here for donations, and this is just wonderful. I mean, absolutely wonderful. All right, so there's any further discussion on this? Okay, there's a motion here. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to act now.
Second.
First and a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. G6, motion to authorize the Director of Finance and Treasurer to increase the account clerk from .75 FTE to 1.0 FTE effective August 1st, 2025. Madam Director of Finance, you've got the floor.
Okay, so as I've stated in a couple of finance committee meetings and also common council meetings, that I am looking to restructure and have begun to restructure the finance and treasury department since our retirement a couple of weeks ago. At the last common council meeting, you all approved our accountant to become the interim deputy treasurer from now until a potential restructure of merging the two management positions that we have. With that, there are a lot of duties that she is going to be unable to fulfill during this transition period and learning her new position. And without bombarding her, I'm asking to increase the account clerk who has been here for 24-plus years and has also done all of these duties in a previous capacity, including training the accountant to do them. With the increase in growth in the city, the increase in employees in the city, she is already loaded up to the amount of hours at her part-time capacity, with working a little overtime here and there to complete all of her payroll, as well as all of the ambulance billing duties. And it's no surprise that we have had issues with our ambulance billing company over the last year, which has also increased the amount of time that she's needed to do her job. So with this, it will help with the restructuring program and then moving forward, seeing how the rest of the management positions go. And I think it went to personnel last night, and they all voted unanimously on that, too.
Further discussion on this? See, Mr. Salus?
Just, are you concerned that, like, you know, now you're thinning your staff? Like, now she have merged responsibility, two positions used to be run by two individuals, now she is doing it? Like, you know, if she decided to take a vacation of time, downtime, whatever it is, are we vulnerable that there is a, you know, vacuum in term of the processing paperwork and payments and stuff like that? How do you feel about that?
Not at the moment, because about five years ago, the accountant position was already streamlined from two, or a person and a half to a full-time position. So I think really seeing how that has gone over the last couple of years has determined that we might need to open that back up by allowing this part-time person to get those hours back.
Thank you. See, no further discussion. Is a motion presented? Would you like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
First and second, since this is a change, let's see, a roll call, please.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Ickman?
Aye.
Aye. Six ayes, no noes, motion carries. G7, in order to amend ordinance 2024-2649, ordinance adopting the 2025 annual budget for the Health Grant Fund to provide resources and appropriations for the approved 2024-2025 Alliance for Wisconsin Youth Opioid Settlement Grant. Madam Director of Finance?
I just put this together as a proper budget amendment. The council approved the grant to be signed on July 1st. The health director did notify me that it still has not been executed yet, but I wanted to get the formal amendment out there, so when it does get executed, she can go spend the funds, and then we'll get the grant money back.
Makes sense. Is there a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Do we have first and a second? Alderman Day, do you have further discussion on this? Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. What?
A roll call.
Thanks, ma'am clerk.
Alderman Pecorelli?
Aye.
Alderman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes, motion carries. Thank you. Going into G8, and then we're going to take a five-minute break after I announce the closed session. Or not. G8, a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 sub one sub E for market competition and bargaining reasons to deliberate and consider terms relating to potential residential commercial developments and proposals, and the investing of public funds and governmental actions in relation to thereto, and to affect test developments, including the terms and provisions of potential development agreements for properties in the southeast corner area of South 76th Street, West Rossin Avenue, such potential development to be named post general and to render open session at the same place thereafter, to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate.
Motion to enter closed session?
Second.
First and a second, further discussion? I'm sorry?
Just have a question.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Alderwoman Day, you've got the floor.
Thank you. So before we vote on this, there were several residents that had questions and concerns about things going into closed session. I think we've discussed why we're going into closed session this evening, but perhaps could we give some examples of where this discussion, if we were to move forward with this proposal, where it will be discussed in open, so residents will be able to hear changes to any potential site plan, where they might be able to voice concerns or see things about some of the traffic issues and other things that were brought up this evening? Is it going to go back before Plan Commission? Is it going to come back before Common Council? Where will they see this if an agreement is made to move forward with this project?
Okay, as I give you a slow answer, Mr. Regis, could you come up there and have a seat and then explain as I explain? So my thoughts were initially is, once we come up with what we believe is a tentative agreement, what we come up with moving forward, A would be on the website, B, Alderman Salus wishes to have a, basically, a town hall on this, which I could see having it probably at the library, with the latest, greatest plans, what we come up with. And that way, there's, everybody has a good understanding, and as we then give out everything that we know. What do you got, Mr. Regis?
Okay, first of all, you know, what we're discussing here tonight, you know, is a financial matter, and so if we like the terms that we're, you're seeing, or have a slight amendment, that's going to have to become a development agreement. So this isn't the last step in that. But in regards to the items you brought up, you saw an example of a changed development plan? Well...
I, Mr. Martin emailed it to me, so I did see it.
And so with that change, there's going to have to be a site plan amendment or something.
Thank you. That's what I'm getting at, so that everybody can understand that what's happening tonight is not the final do-all. You know, if the answer after tonight is yes, everything's done, whatever, moving forward, no one gets to see anything or have an input, that's not what's happening here. So I'm just trying to clear the deck for all of the things that were going around. That this, tonight is a very specific purpose. There will be plenty of other meetings and opportunities for residents to voice their concerns. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Salus?
Just to clarify, the reason I want to have this meeting with the community, I just like, basically, I want to present them a summary of the information the way we know it. Of course, you know, once there is a final agreement, there will be a public document regulate that, you know, but, you know, the actual discussion, it has to be, or the actual negotiation has to be into a closed session. But the community members wish to know what's, you know, just like, without knowing the details, they deserve to know what's going on. So that's why I'm doing this, you know, open meeting with the community next month.
I would like to add that if there is any tax dollars involved, that automatically goes to the joint review board. So there's another board that hears the items at hand and votes and another deciding piece of all of that.
That's, and that's the process, that's another process that goes through the joint review board, but that also comes back through council as well. Where to form the Tax Increment Financing District, you have to go through this process in addition to any site plan amendments. So there will be multiple processes that have all of this information involved.
And thank you for the explanation, because that also debunks a lot of falsities that are out there, and misinformation, and scare tactics, and everything else under the sun. So thank you all for that input. Any else down here?
As I say, I'm hopeful that that helps with some of the concerns that were here tonight, that there's plenty of more discussion to take place.
Absolutely. So we've got a first and a second roll call to go into closed session?
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Ickman?
Aye.
Aye. Six ayes, no noes, motion carries. We're slowly going into closed session, and we will take a short break. It is 7:32. Please be back at 7:40. 7:40. Eight minutes. I gotta, let us know, Kelly, please. Okay, it's 10:13 PM. We are back in open session. The motion as, on the floor will be to proceed as discussed in closed session regarding continuation of negotiations with the developer. Is there a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
First and second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Going over to licenses, and this item, excuse me, so licenses. Who's doing licensing today?
I got it.
All right, Alderman Craig, you've got the floor.
All righty, this will be very quick. So pages 48 and 49, all the operators that have applied for a license, the committee recommends approval on all operators. On page 50, the first operator, we are requesting an appearance to the committee. All the other applicants are recommended for approval, and the temporary Class B beer for St. Martin's Fair via the Franklin Lions Club is also recommended for approval.
Courtney, do you want to go ahead, or do you want me to?
Is it Woodward?
Yes.
That is incorrect.
So Alderwoman Day, you've got the floor now?
I believe we wanted Elizabeth Woodward to come in for a correction of application.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Failed to...
Do you want her hold for appearance, or just correction of application?
Just a correction of application.
Okay, correction of application. Very good.
So I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a first, now we have a second. Let's do a roll call on this.
Alderman Pecorelli?
Aye.
Alderman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes, motion carries. Going on to ayes and ayes, which is also a roll call vote. Vouchers and payroll approval, council selection requested, motion to approve the following. Three points. Point one, city vouchers with an ending date of July 10th, 2025, the amount of $2,853,293.29. Point two, payroll dated July 11th, 2025, in the amount of $493,915.52 in payments of the various payroll deductions, in the amount of $276,388.84 plus city matching payments, and estimated payroll dated July 25th, 2025, in the amount of $510,000 in payments of the various payroll deductions, in the amount of $550,000 plus city matching payments. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a first.
Second.
We have a second, but Alderman Craig, roll call, please.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderman Ickman?
Aye.
Aye. Six ayes, no noes, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
It's aggressive. We have a first and a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?